Okay, welcome to Marquette Township's regularly scheduled Planning Commission meeting. It's Wednesday, February 26, 2020, and it's 7:00 PM. Let us introduce ourselves. Jim?
Jim Johnson, White Oak Drive.
Steve Hakenin, Lake Enchantment Trail.
Mike Springer, Eagles Nest Road.
Dave Wigan, Birkton Road.
Jason McCarthy, Planning and Zoning Administrator.
Next up is the approval of the agenda.
So moved.
So? Support from Johnson, move by Wigan, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Minutes from the previous meeting of February 12, 2020.
I have no questions, but if nobody else does, I would move to approve.
Wigan moves. Johnson supports, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, public comment. Welcome to TV 6 in Mining Journal, and you're welcome to comment. New business, 6A. We have a request for a public hearing for a special use permit post-short-term rental. It's located in Resource Production. I gotta see where this is. And where is Holy Oak?
So I made a convenient map for you. The white balloon up in the western, northwestern corner up there. I don't think they're gonna have many complaints up that way, hopefully. But, I don't know, somebody made us aware that that was being advertised on Airbnb. As such, we contacted the representative of the property, and he gladly came in and filled out the appropriate application, paid the fee. And with your blessing, we will schedule a public hearing for March 25 at 7:00. Notification we put in the newspaper 15 days ahead of time, and all the neighbors within 300 feet of the property. First date law.
Is that a lot of them?
It looks like there's only gonna be... Four.
What do you need? I'm impressed. Oh, Mr. Wigan.
I make a motion to schedule a public hearing on March 25 at 7:00 PM.
Mark?
Support with Johnson. Any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, unfinished business, 7A, draft marijuana zoning text amendment discussion. Mr. McCarthy?
Yes, sir. So as you know, we've been slowly introducing both adult-use recreational marijuana provisions and medical marijuana provisions into our zoning ordinance. And we started off with adding the state definitions to Article 2 definitions in our zoning ordinance, of course, all in draft form. And then we, at the last meeting, we worked through our land use nomograph, Article 15, principal uses permitted in districts. We took those same, not definitions, but the terms that were used as part of the definitions. We assigned a land use intensity to those land uses, and we designated which zoning district that we thought each of those would be permissible by way of a special use permit. So that has been included per the last meeting for your final review on that section. And that leads us into Article 16. And Article 16 basically discusses detailed use regulations, so specific criteria for particular uses. And in this case, we're deeming these all to be special uses. So we knew that this was gonna be the more challenging article of the ordinance to really nail down. So what I've done is I've gleaned, as you can probably tell by a typo that was included on page 50 previously, that I've gleaned other communities' ordinances to craft ours. And that came from a couple different townships, one being Republic Township in Apportion, and the other being Nagani Township. What I didn't do is assign, and this would be your task, at least in the draft form, to assign the number of licenses that would be allowed per use. But what I did do is add several sections to Article 16. One is the marijuana facilities in general. What this is about, the purpose, it is the intent of this ordinance to authorize and establish certain types of marijuana facilities in Marquette Township and provide for the adoption of reasonable restrictions to protect public health, safety, and general welfare of the community at large. And it goes on to talk about a potential fee that may be associated with each application. It denotes the Medical Marijuana Facilities and Licensing Act, the Michigan Regulation and Taxation of Marijuana Act. The next section provides definitions, although it just references back to Article 2. Item C would be Authorization of Facilities and Fees. That's what gives us the ability to address. One, the length of time that each license would be allowable, and then a non-refundable fee paid for each facility licensed under this ordinance. So it goes into regulations and procedures for issuing a license. It goes into specific standards to be considered for marijuana facility special use permit. It discusses things like lighting, odor, signage, indoor production and processing. There's a number of things. In fact, this is, it took a lot of time and effort to get it here. But basically, you move down to F, talks about renewals, applicability, and then H, penalties enforcement, servability, and then an effective date which would be added should this ever come to fruition at the board level. Now, keep in mind, this was a pretty rough draft. It wasn't necessarily slammed together, but there were a lot of things that I had hoped that the Planning Commission would consider, things that you may have not considered yet. Filtration systems, safety compliance facilities with regard to state requirements. I tried to be as detailed as possible, but this is really now in your hands to make any comments, suggestions, additions, subtractions.
Just before we, I just wanna go back to Article 15, that first page there, it says page 5. There's three spaces there that we didn't assign. Supposed to be S's?
Okay.
I would assume? At least this is what mine.
Page 5?
Of the nomograph.
Oh, yeah, recreational access marijuana grower?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Get those.
And then I'll change that to red on the land use category. Thanks for that.
Mr. Wigan, you have something?
Oh, a bunch of comments.
Good.
Gone over half a dozen times. And I guess the first place I find some comments that I made was on Article 16 and the number, I think it's on page 48. So it's Article 16, page 48, and it's under C, Authorization of Facilities and Fees. And I know that some of our neighbors have left that wide open without letting the market determine. I guess I look at it from the other perspective, that we should determine a smaller number, and we can change it if the, if there's a lot of interest in it. But I don't think we should just let, take in a dozen applications for an area and then try to control it, because that's kind of closing the barn door after the horse is gone.
So you'd say we should be concerned?
What I would do is I would put a lot of twos and threes in there. Under grower, processor, secure transporter, I would do twos. Under provisioning center, marijuana retailer, I'd do three. Safety compliance facility, two. The marijuana microbusiness and event organizer, I would do three. Temporary marijuana event, I would do one. And designated consumption establishment, I would do two. Because underneath that, it says, "At least every year after adoption of this ordinance, the township board shall review the maximum number of each type of marijuana facility allowed and determine whether this maximum number should be changed."
Which would just be a simple zoning text amendment at that point.
Right, so I would just think that we would start out on the low side and see what happens.
What'd you put for your first three, grower?
The first three were grower, processor, and secure transporter, I put twos.
Okay, I got it from there. There are actually 10 areas for recreational marijuana, correct? Are these, is one of these doubled up? Because we should see 10 different occupations.
I thought that one was a state license that had to be, is it the secure, the secure transporter?
Transporter, but.
Is that the access one?
Might be the access.
Yeah, I think the access one's what you're looking at, Mike.
Is that what it is?
Yeah.
Okay, so that should actually be the number 10.
Well, wouldn't that come under?
Grower?
The grower, okay.
There's a grower and access grower.
Got it.
We could put access in parentheses, or we could list access grower underneath that, just to specify.
Yeah, if they've got 10, we probably should look at all.
Would you also want that one to have two possible applications per year as well?
See, I would do.
Or not per year, but two initially?
Grower slash access grower, two.
Okay.
You're just saving ink.
No, because otherwise you're actually allowing four.
That's a good point. Yeah, I didn't want to designate those. I felt like you had to insert your own, I guess, recommendations.
Yeah, if I can finish my comments and then.
Yep.
It's rather than everybody jump around on it, and then we can turn it over to the next guy. On page 49, the next page, under paragraph 4, I have an issue with the end of the sentence on paragraph 4, which it says, "Provisional license will lapse and be void if such permits and approvals are not diligently pursued to completion." I think that's an arbitrary term. And I think that's probably unenforceable. And I would suggest something like, "Are not pursued to completion in a timely manner as determined by the zoning administrator nor planning commission." And then on the next paragraph, 5, the last sentence, "The planning commission shall proceed with scheduling a public hearing regardless..." Regarding the request, I think that, the way I read that says, "Regardless of what the planning commission reads when they read it the first time through, they have to schedule a public hearing," and I don't think that's true. I think it should say, "Following review, the planning commission may schedule a public hearing or deny the application as a..."
Okay.
Or consider.
That just, because you're gonna present this one time, and then it's up to the commissioner whether they schedule a public hearing or not. The way that's worded, they must schedule a public hearing, which I don't think is true.
Correct.
Right, as with any other conditional use permit application.
Right. If you continue down on that page, under E, "Specific standards to be considered", at the last line in paragraph 1A, it says, "Then the township may suspend the acceptance of applications for conditional use permits pending the resolution of the legal issuing question." What is a conditional use permit?
It's the same, it's synonymous with, it's synonymous with a special use permit.
I was thinking we should change every place where it says conditional use permit. We should change it to say special use permit.
Absolutely.
And I found that in seven spaces in the paragraphs that run down. I found one in A, one in B, two in paragraph C, and.
E?
In paragraph E. And then, where you already got that one from the supervisor about the reference to Nagani Township, right?
Yes.
Okay. And then, as I went on down, 3C on page 50, I'm sorry, 4C. 4A on page 50, last, if anybody helped. It says, "The building shall be equipped with an odor control filtration system to ensure that odor leaving the building is not detectable at any adjacent property." I think that should say, we should remove that added adjacent property, that odor leaving the building is not detectable.
Say that again, Dave.
Well, that last sentence.
No, I get that.
4A. It says, "The building shall be equipped with an odor control filtration system to ensure that odor leaving the building is not detectable." And one I have in question is, "At any adjacent property." I think we should remove that at any adjacent property.
Okay, just so it's not detectable.
And just read that odor leaving the building is not detectable.
Got it.
It gives the enforcement a little bit latitude. Because on a windy day, I think if it's leaving the building, it's gonna be detectable someplace.
Very well be.
On the next page, page 51, under, I guess, J4, reads, "Nonconforming uses of provisioning center may not locate in a building in which a nonconforming retail use has been established in any district." I'm not sure what "in any district" is for.
Any zoning district. But it could be simply just stated that.
Retail use.
Retail use has been established, period? Yes.
And so I was gonna say, just remove that.
Perfect.
Then on the next page, page 52, that's what you get when you give a reply ahead of time. After 6A, the sentence reads, "The building shall be equipped with an odor control," same thing.
Okay.
Remove the comment about "at any adjacent property." And if you go down to K2 on that same page, it reads, "All activities of marijuana safety, of a marijuana safety compliance facility, including all transfers of marijuana, shall be conducted within the structure. In out of public view, I thought it would be appropriate to put that same paragraph under I1, there should be an I2 in there with that same paragraph, where it's talking about transporting.
Okay.
So they can't be transferring product out the middle of the parking lot between trucks and.
Sure, so we're gonna bump K2 and add it to I2, and then make I2 number three?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, either way, make it I3 if you want to, I guess.
Well, it's the same, it's the same as above, so.
Yeah. And the last comment I think I had was on page 53, which is under H, penalties enforcement. There doesn't seem, and this would be a question for legal, there doesn't seem to be a sentence that establishes that cost incurred as a result of violation of this ordinance is chargeable to the offender.
So do you wanna, maybe we can make a reference per the larger section of the ordinance that deals with enforcement?
Well, the reason I even raised the question is it says plus costs in this line here. And it doesn't really define plus costs. I just thought we should define what plus costs are.
Okay, plus any, yeah, I got it.
And I think, yeah, that's it.
Okay, while we're on page 53, under H, number three, the first sentence, I think we need, instead of ordinance enforcement officer, probably zoning administrator, just to fit.
Sure.
Our township.
Yep.
On 52, under 6C, instead of just saying engineer may be required? A engineer or another engineer?
Where are you at?
I'm on 52 now, I'm going backwards.
Okay.
So 52, 6C, preface that with an A or the.
An engineer.
An engineer, okay. Same thing on 51, under C, which would have been IC.
Yep.
Oh, also, Dave, you're looking for conditional uses on 52, and B, there's another conditional use that.
Okay.
Should be changed.
52?
On page 52, in paragraph B, midway down, conditional use application. And let's see what else. Caught all the ones? That's it, for me.
I'm sure I found your reference to conditional use. Where it says, "Oder control system shall be designed by a mechanical engineer."
Yes, that one, B, 6B.
I must be going blind.
I see, we're going down conditionals first word. Special.
Oh, okay, yeah, I got it.
So that's all I had.
Yeah, I have a question for you. Why would odor be a concern in a retail marijuana establishment? I mean, you, 6 is under this, and you go to odor. And then you're talking about a production or a processing facility under a.
Which page is it on?
Retailer, 52, 6. So if you continue on, 5, 4, 3, 2, 1, we're talking about provisioning centers or marijuana retailers. So you can't open a window in a marijuana retailer's building? I think, I, you know.
Right.
I mean, odor is processing, growing, that kind of stuff. I think once it's packaged and stuff like that, I don't think it's like. So I don't, I don't know if that's applicable to a marijuana retailer, the odor provision under that. I think maybe a processor, grower, something like that. But I don't think a retailer has that, you know, you can't open doors or a window if it's on a retail establishment? I mean, that. Because you're talking about two separate things here. You're talking about marijuana production or marijuana processing facilities, but it's under the retailer.
Actually, there is.
What's that?
There's an odor, yeah.
There's an odor, but I don't think you could, I mean, what if they wanted to open their window in their summer? I mean, I mean, the, I was in a fire station. I don't, I didn't sense an overwhelming odor in that building that they have to filter. So I'm not, I'm not sure if that's applicable to this. I'm not sure if it's applicable to insist that they have a filtration system on a retail building. And I think that's what this also indicates as well.
We could certainly.
Check into that, at least.
Discuss it, or, I mean, if you, if there's consensus to question that, then we'll certainly put it on legal's punch list for.
Yeah, I would, I would see if that's required, you know.
Okay.
Yeah, from my perspective, there is an odor.
Okay.
In a retail, with retail business.
Okay.
You can tell that if you walk to the one out in Nagani by the old airport.
Yeah, I didn't notice anything in there, but that may be, because they don't smoke it in there. They're not growing it in there, they're not processing it in there.
You just walk in there and walk around. There's an odor.
Okay. And then how do you define how much odor? Who's, who's, who's to be the odor police?
Yeah.
Is it parts per million? Is it, I smell it, I don't. I mean, I mean, how is, how is that quantified?
It's a skunk, yeah, I don't know.
I mean, no, I'm serious, how do you quantify that?
And we also have restaurants that residents.
And odors, I mean, what, I mean, so what?
Not the cuss up, but that's not an.
That's a good skunk.
Yeah, it's.
But I'm curious, so how do you quantify odor and how much, how much? Is too much, because you can't filter 100% of anything.
In that same paragraph, you could just quantify an acceptable or an unacceptable level above such, such thing.
Yeah, Roger will probably use the term reasonable. And that's very nebulous.
Yeah, it's very subjective, too.
Yeah, subjective, nebulous.
Okay.
But we'll certainly vet that out.
Yeah.
My, it was, I guess, my view that if, if the planning commission and the board were to support a potential ordinance, that it would likely be the most restrictive or one of the more restrictive, conservative type of ordinances that we could put together. That, you know, we look at odor vibration with mining activities and other such uses. So not that this is, I wouldn't say, a contentious issue.
Yeah.
In that regard, but I wanted to incorporate some of those same health, welfare, and safety provisions that we have in other special uses that would be applicable to this.
I wonder if not, if, instead of doing a lot of technical search on that, if you couldn't go in and look at some other areas that have it and see if they address.
Yeah, I'll check out Colorado, California.
The level.
Of course, I went to California last April, and everywhere you went, it smelled like marijuana. Everywhere. Malibu, Venice Beach, it was, it was wild. It was really different.
You could just run smoking or just the marijuana?
Just the general odor, yeah. It was bizarre.
And regarding the, must be D4, regarding the provisional license, provisional license will lapse. Are we gonna put a timeframe on that, or is it just, you know, if you didn't get it done within 90 days or two years, or, I mean, I mean.
He's on 49?
Yeah, 49, four. We talked about, you know, we were not gonna diligently pursue it to completion, but is there a timeframe we would expect him to have that done, or?
Yeah, we could apply the same principle as we would on, let's say, an abandoned sign, you know, six months.
Yeah.
What have you. Yeah, we can look at that for sure, timeframe.
Because, you know, tell us, either they do or they don't, that's kind of nebulous. And say, you've got 90 days to do this, 30 days to do this, six months, a week. I mean, so maybe something like that.
Sure.
Just for your information also, with this odor thing, if you're gonna have legal check it out, you might wanna have him check out, like, Burger King court cases. Because in restaurant magazines, there've been Burger King, you know how they blow all that stuff out because they boil the burgers, and there've been court cases with that as far as the odor, where they have sued them for that, and so they came up with some standards as to what you could smell and what you couldn't smell.
Like a scientific standard?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, very interesting. Thanks, Jim, that's great comment. And as being a restaurant owner, it certainly could come into place where you're mixed in with retail office and residential, and you're looking. Yeah, I know that in my time in Ashland, there was a new burger joint, I believe, that opened there, and they were required to put in, it's some, I think it's like a carbon, it's like a carbon filter, basically. You run everything through it, and it really takes the odor away, so.
Actually, it's an ozone machine.
Is it?
Yeah. We used to use those in construction when you're doing smoke damage repair. You use an ozone machine to cycle the air through to peel all the smokes out. And what it is, is they have that ozone filter on their air filtration system. And that kills the odor.
The, the power plant in Ashland, Wisconsin burns coal, wood chips, and recycled tires. And those recycled tires, they burn so hot that they have a filter at the top of the stack. I guess burning tires is obviously very bad for the environment. But that, whatever filters on top of that, removes that, like a urea filtration system, so, yeah. I didn't, you know, until I started doing planning and zoning, I would have never known that there were tools like that.
Yeah, the name of that company, I think, was Smoke Odor Control Corporation.
Okay.
And they had a franchise and a license on those machines. And they were about that square. And they just sat in the middle of the room with the. square, and they just sat in the middle of the room with the thing turned on, and it was like a.
Magic.
Mosquito killer, every once in a while you hear a pop and a buzz, but that's all it took.
Okay. So next steps for the press that are here would be to make these changes, bring that draft back to, if sufficient at that time, we would then send it to our legal counsel for their comment and review. If that comes back and it needs some more work, we'll make that, but if, let's say it comes back without any issues, then if the planning commission is supportive of that, we would schedule a public hearing to really get the input of the people, because this is what it's really all about, is getting the input of our residents and business owners to provide their input on what we're proposing, and then if that's passed, it'd go to the township board.
Are we talking a public hearing sometime?
Potentially in March, early April, yeah, first weekend in April. I know that we've got a potential absence in the second meeting in April, and we're, one planning commissioner is short right now, so we wouldn't want to, I guess, schedule a public hearing with the chance that somebody else couldn't make it, we wouldn't have a corner, but we're plugging along, and I think we're getting close to the end. So with legal review pending any major issues, yeah, we could be up for a public hearing sometime in April.
I had one more question, on page forty-eight, for number two, above that, it says at least every one year? Is that at least every year? Should it be at least every year, do you wanna keep that one in there?
We should just put every year after adoption, or do you wanna put at least, because it allows it to review it more than, you know, at any time? We can scratch the one, at least every year, comma, or after the adoption of the ordinance, comma, the township board show review, I could just scratch the number one.
And then what about, are we determining the number of, of these?
You're proposing two, and then obviously you're gonna have comment from the public, so that's one of those things that could be adjusted. The township board could get a hold of it, and they could adjust it, but we're just making a recommendation to the board, but yes, you are deciding, or Dave, I guess, with your concurrence, is establishing that we're gonna allow a couple or a few in certain categories, and only one in a couple categories, and see how that goes.
Why, the reason I put one in that temporary event, because that suggests you're not gonna have more than one temporary event on a weekend. So, otherwise, a lot of parties coming in the township together.
There'd be fires to put out both north and south.
If the wind's blowing right, everybody will be getting their lawn work, yard work done.
Not getting it done, you mean?
Not getting it done, yeah.
Shall we move on to correspondence, then?
Sure.
Okay.
Thanks, guys, good comment.
Mr. Wiegand, what about the draft committee meeting minutes of February fourth?
The only thing that is going on at the road committee is, on February fourth, we submitted a recommendation to the manager for an award of the, the road maintenance for 2020, he's been working on it, and I did see a, it's in this coming Tuesday's packet for March third, where the board will actually consider the manager's recommendation. So that's about it, the road committee really doesn't have anything to do until after that, recommendation's been reviewed by the board and approved or denied or whatever.
Do you know what that recommendation is?
Recommendation was what exactly would come out of the road committee for, to look at the ninety thousand and change maintenance program for 2020, and remove all of the chip seal projects, and reduce that down to six, I think it was sixty-six thousand. I could have those numbers, could be a lot, but that's the general gist of it, which causes a budget issue, and it's really up to the board and a recommendation from the manager to see if that budget discrepancy can be worked with, because it's about thirteen thousand dollars over budget for this year.
Was there a part of Oak Hill that wasn't done before?
No.
I thought the whole subdivision was done.
It was.
Which one wasn't done, down the ore part, or?
No, the whole thing's done.
Oh, how come it, why does it say that the crack seal and Oak Hill subdivision can be removed?
That was if, that was the recommendation from the road committee, if, the recommendation was to remove the chip seal projects as a whole, and remove that down to sixty-six thousand. And if that was not, if the board did not accept that, because it's thirteen thousand dollars over budget, that the next recommendation to get that down to budget would be to remove the crack seal in Oak Hill. The recommendation from the road committee was that that's, they didn't support that idea, because if you don't do the crack seal maintenance this year, you're gonna double the cost of it the year after anyway, so the recommendation was is that we should do what we should do to find that thirteen thousand dollars and make sure we get that maintenance done this year. And that's what the manager's recommendation reflects, 'cause I've seen the board packet, and that's what he's got in.
So this is just for the cracks where, you know, roll on the seal cracks?
Right.
Okay, okay. That's thirteen thousand to do that, the subdivision?
Yep.
Wow.
That's what we said when we saw it.
You should see what it costs to reconstruct it.
That's unbelievable.
A million dollars a mile.
Yep, it's actually six hundred thousand dollars a lane mile to reconstruct it, so it's one point two million to do a mile of that.
And that's just a County A road.
Mm-hmm, unbelievable. So anyway, that's the road committee report.
That'll cover correspondence and the report, huh?
Mm-hmm.
Boy, that was good. You have the approved recreation committee meeting minutes of January twenty-first in your packet. One of the things that we're working on right now are the bylaws, we're gonna make some small edits, which will probably occur at our next meeting. And also, I have some maps here that planning staff has been working on. Mr. Wiegand has seen these, if you wanna take a look at these, there's a couple examples of some maps that we're gonna use on the kiosks at Schwemmet.
Okay, these are just.
Keep in, keep in mind, they're gonna be twice as big or a little larger.
Right, they'll go fit into those signs that have been empty since we put them in there three years ago, two years ago. Other than that, once again, Sustainable Built Environment Initiative, our second community meeting will be April ninth, and we hope that the community, a lot of people show up for it. And that's my recreation committee report.
What was the problem with the safe routes to schools, why, how come North Star Academy didn't approve that?
It wasn't so much North Star Academy, it was.
It was, they didn't like the route, that we were proposing, we were proposing further connectivity of existing infrastructure, and the segment that we were going to look at for this particular year was to connect the terminus of the US forty-one north pathway, which comes out of the tunnel and will terminate once it moves east to Wright Street, and we know that we had Pathway Adventure, so we wanted to connect Wright Street to Venture. And from what I understood from the North Star Academy's principal, is that it didn't, they don't believe that it suited their needs as a school, and effectively provided more, a greater ability for students to get to North Star Academy. When in fact, in my view, that couldn't be further from the truth, because we have easement through Bishop Woods, and by placing the tunnel where it is, and the accessibility to the Iron Road Heritage Trail, an additional three percent of our population has safe passage under the highway to the north side of the highway. And whatever percentage of that three percent are school-aged children that attend North Star Academy, they would have been able to safely get to school by way of the tunnel being where it is.
Did they have any alternative proposals that they were thinking of?
They did not wanna pursue.
At all?
At all. I don't know if it was a time consideration on her part, or?
I think it was, they have moved from having a CEO and two superintendents to one superintendent, no CEO. So I think it's, and this was this year, that this all started up, so I think with the time thing there.
Yeah, because Safe Roads to School actually reached out to the township and asked us if we had any potential projects, and of course, I'm gonna say yes, and here's one right here, and this is what we didn't complete the last time, and it was out of the budget in two thousand fifteen, but we'd still like to propose it, and of course, North Star Academy has to be fully on board with that, or at least vetting that out in order to move forward. And it was kind of a time suck, in that there's lots of studies, and reaching out to parents, and interviewing students, and all of these other things, you know, how do you get to school most days? There was a lot of grunt work that went along with it, that I know that the previous, I think it was Karen Anderson, you know, she, she was able to complete that work, so. You try again next year.
Okay, with that, I believe we're on to number ten, announcements.
I'll just start by.
You have a board report?
Oh.
Oh, sorry.
Skip that one.
Skip the board.
Their February fourth meeting, they scheduled and held a strategic planning work session yesterday.
They did?
Yep, and they approved a letter of support for the Sherlo parking extension, and that was passed on to the manager, he was gonna put a letter together, and, or he was gonna pass it on to Jason, I'm not sure which. And they approved an amendment to the Standec agreement, and this is basically for the asset management program. Yeah, we got an equipment purchase update, everybody's aware, we're getting a piece of equipment, the snow blower, that was pushed back two weeks, so we should see it, I'm guessing about the second week, first, first or second week in March. And then, I believe, other than that, since then, we have heard back from our manager candidate, and he has declined to accept our offer, so we're still looking. And other than that, that's it.
Okay. Mr. McCarthy, you had an announcement?
Yeah, I placed at your, at the dais there, a, if you remember, the county camp presented to us a while back about their master plan update, and they went around and basically presented to all the municipalities in the county, and what they're gonna do now, coming up, is have some regional meetings on their findings, and some, you know, different things that they're gonna be looking at proposing, so I believe ours is the Borealis Beach region, and that rally is gonna be Tuesday, July fourteenth, from six to eight thirty PM at the Barrel and Beam. So please attend if you can.
You also sent us an email on trainings you might wanna mention for planning.
Yeah, I don't have the specifics in front of me, but I just forward along anything that comes basically from MSU Extension. I know that Ryan, our staff planner, is going to be attending the site plan review workshop downstate near where he's from, and the zoning breakout session that was offered, too. And then there's also a citizen planner workshop, which is kind of a series of Wednesdays, I believe, and if anybody really wants to be brought up to speed on some of the finer points of planning and zoning, and probably more so some of the more modern or current issues and opportunities, you know, let me know if you guys want. The only problem is that some of those.
Two of them are.
Coincide with our meeting, so.
When I first started, I had the opportunity to take a citizens planner course, and it was really good, really worth it, so. Be nice to have our new planner, or planning commissioner, do we know anything about?
No, we've advertised, I presented at the last board meeting about what the planning commission does, and we have yet to find a candidate.
So maybe TV six news will show that we need a planning commissioner here in Market Township and advertise that for us, will you please? Thank you. Okay, public comment. Additional comments by planning commissioners. Jim?
I'm thinking her, but I can't come up with anything.
I have nothing. Nothing additional from me?
Just to make how much work we've got done here in forty-five minutes.
Great.
Yeah, it's, the only thing I'll say is, it's really kinda hard to believe that we can't get a planning commissioner in our community in particular, because of how much we have going on and how exciting I think it is, and so, yeah, I reached out to some Doug Gordon, who now lives in Bishop Woods, works for a financial company in town, but he's part of the Economic Club in Marquette, and he's taken on a leadership role there, so he respectfully declined to apply, but trying to find some younger folks, too, that, you know, it seems like in, at least in my experience in local government, that you don't really participate until you get old enough to have a vested interest in something. Unfortunately, that's the way it goes, so.
That was kind.
Yeah, that's the most PC way I could put that, but it's true. And so, it's tough to get younger folks to serve, and time is the new commodity, right? People don't like to give it up, so.
Well, you know, and that's what kept me from getting on any boards or committees until I retired.
Yes.
And when you retired, you, that's what you do.
And it makes sense, yeah, but there's, I don't know, it's a noble cause, I think, you know, you have a chance to shape your community that you live in, that you work in, in some cases, and.
Yeah, I wouldn't have, I wouldn't be on this if I didn't have the time, because it takes a lot of time.
Yeah, to understand it, to fully adjust everything.
It does. Anybody else? Okay, with that, we'll adjourn the meeting at seven forty-seven. No gambling. Oh, thank you.